All right, good afternoon. Having your own meeting. Now I'd like to bring the regular afternoon meeting of Township of Langley Council to order. I know, new mic, new sound. Coming to you all the way from the Township of Langley, you hear the sounds of Mayor Jack Fros. The first item would be the adoption or receipt of the agenda items, and before we do that, because we have some delegations that pertaining to some reports under F, reports to council, I'd like to ask council's indulgence to move F seven to immediately after the delegations and F four. So with that, those changes, moved by Consor Fox, second by Consor Qualley, all those in favor, opposed, carried. A motion to adopt the minutes of the regular afternoon meeting of July the 24th. Consor Arneson and Consor Whitmarsh, any errors or missions, all those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. And our motion to resolve into special close for the items on the agenda.
Do we have to accept?
Oh, the delegations, they're, no, it's all included, it's under policy. So there are two additional delegations, but they are included. Motion to resolve into special close, Consor Whitmarsh, second, Consor Qualley, anybody else, all those in favor, opposed, carried, we now move to special closed. All right, good afternoon. Now, I'd like to reconvene the regular afternoon meeting of the Township of Langley Council, and we move on to delegations. And the first delegation is Ms. Tamara Janson of Darvanda Nurseries Limited.
Thank you so much. We've been farming here in Langley, actually, I think it's been about forty-three years.
Maybe just for everybody, just your name and where your farm is?
Tamara Janson, we're just off of Glover Road and Two Sixteenth Street, six-six-nine Two Sixteenth Street, and our own home is right beside the farm there. But we actually started farming right across the street from David Davis there, on Two Sixteenth Street as well, and we've been there for, like I say, about forty-three years, and now, we tried to conglomerate all of our work onto the one farm, the new farm, which is the six-six-nine zero Two Sixteenth Street. We have also the fifteen acres behind, you can see all those things in the proposal. What we're trying to do is, right now, we're actually using the backyard of our own home property for growing mums, and we would really like to be able to actually do a swap of that land, so we can actually make, we need to fix that little piece at the back of our property, which combines with the Maxwell property and the Two Sixteen six-six-nine zero, so that we can actually use that as a throughway. We're already using it as a throughway, but if we ever wanted to sell our property, we're kind of stuck, that's, it's a necessary piece for the working of the farm. So basically, what we're trying to do is use the pieces that we do own and make them a bit more effective for the farm that we're doing. We're, yeah, hoping that the presentation that we put here makes a lot of sense. It's really, we figure it's just a fairly small tweak, we're actually giving a little bit of ALR land back in, as opposed to taking anything out, and it's just making our farm a little bit easier to use. So, I don't know, Your Worship, is it possible that perhaps Colin could do a little bit of speaking on our behalf?
Sure, sure, you still have, yeah, still have three and a half minutes, yeah.
Yeah, is that right? Okay.
In your presentation, so it's your time.
Thank you, Your Worship, and I'll just introduce myself as Colin Fry. I'm representing Darvanda Nursery right now. In my former life, in my former career, I was with the agriculture land commission for thirty-five years, culminating in, prior to my departure, as being the chief tribunal officer for the commission. So, to the proposal, I think Tamara's laid it out already well, I just wanted to speak to a few points about the ALR side of this ledger. And, right now, Darvanda is only dealing with the restructuring of the farm and the ALR component, and they fully recognize that, subsequent to that, assuming the commission would be agreeing to the change, that laying of the township would be re-engaged for whatever they want to do subsequent to that. I'd like to also point out that this is a reconfiguration of the farm, and its only intent is to relocate the non-ALR component from one area to another, and I would like to propose that the farm be considered as the aggregate of both properties, and that's where the functional property is right now. One of the property also serves as the home site for the owners, but it's being used, and it has been used for quite some time, as being part of the property. So, there is an opportunity, as it currently exists with the land out of the ALR, to approach council to explore other opportunities on the existing home site lot. However, that's not practical from the planned expansions of Darvando, which is a substantial expansion of the greenhouses, and also would compromise, without doing it, compromise the logistics around the property to get to all sides of their farms. So it is a reconfiguration, and as I said, there is approximately a point-four hectare non-ALR component associated with the farm now, and that would be, it's just switched over to a different location off Two Hundred and Sixteenth Street. The proposal is advantageous to the agricultural operation as a legitimate agricultural enterprise. It is small in nature, but it is huge an impact to the proponents with respect to their future objectives for expansion, which I say is a substantial capital investment to their operation and a benefit to the township. You may have also seen in past applications to the commission proposed trade-offs. We would propose to do this, we will do that in response. I would say, in this particular case, this proposal doesn't fit into that basket, because really all we're trying to do is to, as I said before, without being overly repetitive, remove one area, put one area into the ALR, it's pretty well a net outcome, zero change, but it's also just relocating the non-ALR component to another site.
Thank you. Some questions from council?
Questions?
Consor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for coming today and making the presentation. Can you just tell us what's happening with the property that's currently being proposed for inclusion, and what's happening with the property that's proposed for exclusion? Just what's happening with those two pieces currently?
Okay, so the, so let me think, which one is, our home?
Is the inclusion.
Is the inclusion. So we live on the front of the property, in the back of the property, we're actually farming already, and there's actually a lot of piping work and so forth to go between greenhouses that are at the back of our home property as well. And currently, on the exclusion part, we try not to do too much at the front there, because we get a lot of vandalism and theft. There are some mums there as well right now, it's not perfect, but yeah, so, we're, pardon? And old buildings as well, yeah, so we're trying to clean that up.
So the part that you're proposing to be included, or for the inclusion, is currently being farmed?
That's correct.
And used for farming purposes, and the plan is to continue to do that with that piece of land?
What we're actually hoping is, we have already plans for another four million dollar greenhouse, which would then span part of the inclusion and the exclusion zone. If this could go through, then that's kind of where we want to position the new greenhouse.
Okay, thank you. Consor Fox.
Well, thank you, and thank you for coming. My wife bought two of your mums at Costco. She said, "I know where those come from." So, just in part of the inclusion piece, in terms of the long-term plan, you have a beautiful older-style veranda around the house. Your proposal, if this was to go through, is for six additional lots, would they be complementary to the existing house there? Because those are all west of the Milner church, or south of the Milner church.
Yes, we would really like to actually, for me, living right there in Milner, I would really like to see it come up a notch. It's such a, it's just a gem, Milner's a real gem there. So that would be the idea, is to actually have something that's very complementary to the idea of historic Milner, but, I mean, who remains to be seen what we can do, but we will continue at this point in time, living in the house that's there, and hopefully fix a few things inside.
The only other question I have is related to the trees, there's a nice bank of trees there, would those trees be affected in any way, do you know?
I believe that they would be, I guess if you would get that far, you'd have to figure out, are they on city property? There you go.
But we own those trees, okay?
There you go.
All right, that's good, thank you.
Consor Davis.
Thank you very much for coming. So, the piece that you talk about, the inclusion, proposed, we're just going to swing it around and make, put it on Two Sixteenth. So, are you trying to make Milner better?
I'm absolutely.
Or are you trying to make farming better? So I think you're, okay, I just want to point that out, maybe to council, that it's just, you're actually, the piece that you're moving is a little smaller than the piece that you'll be putting in.
No, it's bigger.
It's, yeah.
It's bigger, the piece that we're moving is bigger than the piece that we're taking out. Correct, did I say that right?
Yeah, the current area behind the existing home site on the smaller property is approximately four, point-four-six.
So it's more, it's just, it's positive?
It's just a smidgen more.
Yeah, so it's not like an exclusion, it's not like, you're just, it's not even a lot line, it's a, you're swinging that over and using it for, so the volume in trade is more.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, and the services are all running along Two Sixteenth, and so, what it would do is, it would just make the, when you drove down Two Sixteenth, it would just make, put a few houses on the street, like, it's a form and character would be the same, it's not like you're...
That's what we would hope for, I mean, we, like I say, we feel Milner is a real gem, and we do have trouble with a lot of theft, I don't know people, I don't know what's going on in Milner, but we do have trouble with that, so we'd like to have more bodies on the street, that would be wonderful. But I do think that if we can make the Milner street look better, then hopefully we can also improve that corner where they pulled that, they pulled that house down, and we'd love to be able to get someone to build something good on that corner, right across from where the little white church used to be.
Going to be a, going to be a little gas station.
It was going to be a gas station and a restaurant, but...
We hope, okay, thanks, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, there's no further questions, thank you very much. And just so you know, we did, at the beginning of the meeting, change the agenda, so that your report will come on right after delegations.
Okay.
So if you want to stick around, you'll see the vote. Thank you. Okay, so thank you very much, the next delegation is Mr. Michael Sanderson, and this is regarding, it's been related to F four on the agenda.
I have a bit of a PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah.
If I could just put it into the right slot here? If I can find the right slot. We will get there shortly, I hope, apologies for this.
Okay, well, we'll do that, now I know and understand the problem, so we can use the same.
Under the suit here.
Otherwise, we don't have access to it.
Okay.
Cool, that'll be good, thanks. I know, just copy them over to the desktop. You have to copy them over, because I have to be able to use this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, are you in this way?
Yeah.
Okay, so can you just...
Pull them over to there?
Sure, let's just go this way, let me just grab this for a sec here.
Okay, wait, look at now.
Yeah, because this...
I see.
I just need to take your USB stick off.
Yeah. Yeah. Should do it.
And then you can go back and then...
Okay, okay. Thank you very much, Mayor Fros, councillors, yes, my name is Michael Sanderson, I'm with Sanderson Planning Limited, and my address is Suite 135 970 Berrard Street in Vancouver. I'm here this afternoon representing the McKinnis family with respect to the proposed non-farm use application within the ALR. I do have a package to hand out to council after we finish the presentation. What I'm going to do over the next few minutes is basically just quickly summarize the main components of the application. The staff report that you have before you for review this afternoon is very comprehensive, all the details of the application, of course, are included in there, I'm just going to give some highlights, a summary, and then I am going to turn it over to Kevin McKinnis, who is going to speak on behalf of the McKinnis family and provide an overview as to the, some of the specifics related to the proposed film activities that are on the property. Thank you.
Five minutes per delegation, there's two, they've, Consor Richter, they've submitted two delegation requests, so each delegation will get five minutes. I'll pause the time, don't worry.
Ah, press the right button, Michael, there we go. Okay, yes, thank you very much. For those that maybe are familiar with the location, the area in red is the McKinnis Farms property, it is approximately ninety-five acres in size, it's located just to the south of Seventy-second Avenue and east of Two Forty-eighth Street. To the west, you can see the Thunderbird Show Park, so that's the location generally. To the north, our range of agricultural and suburban rural residential properties, and the southern boundary is formed by the main rail line, so you can see generally the location of the property in the township. The existing land use activities, is a working farm, approximately ninety-five acres, the areas that are taken up by the current film activities sets and related facilities, approximately three acres of that entire ninety-five acres, so about three percent of the total property is taken up by the proposed, or the existing film activities, the temporary film sets and so forth. So it's a very small proportion of the proposed property is being requested for the non-farm use for the film activities. As we've indicated in the application, the proposal is, as I say, for non-farm, for a temporary, for a ten-year period, to allow for the existing film activities to be completed and to be removed and replaced at some point in time by rehabilitation of the site facilities for agricultural operations. Currently, the main activities on the property with respect to the film activities are for the temporary film sets for the TV show When Calls the Heart, and it's now in its fifth season. Here are some photographs that you can see of the temporary facilities, most of which are on skids that can be removed and will be removed at the appropriate time. Some of the existing buildings that are being used right now are existing farm buildings that are being jointly used for either storage or sets for the TV show and so forth. So, again, they are easily removed for the most part when the time comes. As I say, just in summary, the large size and location of the property has permitted citing of the temporary film sets well within the interior, away from the bounding roads. Something's going on with the PowerPoint, I apologize for this. So, the sets themselves are located several hundred meters for the most part, from either Two Forty-eighth Street, or from Seventy-second Avenue, or from the rail lines, so they're located well within the site, they have no impact on the adjacent lands. We have received support from all the immediate neighbors to the property for the proposed non-farm use. We, when the time comes for the film sets to be removed, we have submitted to the township and the commission a comprehensive reclamation plan when the, say, the property is rehabilitated for agricultural activities at that time. The staff report has indicated that the zoning is, the IE3 zoning is compatible with the zoning, as well as the township's rural plan in terms of the agricultural countryside designation. So we are going to request that council endorse the proposed application for the non-farm use for the temporary period of ten years, and as I say, Kevin McKinnis is going to provide some commentary with respect to the McKinnis family's operation and perspective on the application. Thank you, and then we can answer any questions you might have together.
Consor Qualley, did you want to wait till the end? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, and... It is, it's F four. No, well, they'll hand them out to us at the end, or at the end of the presentation.
Hello, my name's Kevin McKinnis, I'm with the McKinnis family, I'm here to present a slideshow on why we believe we should be issued a non-farm use in regards to our farm set, or our film set, I mean. I also have handouts for after the presentation that go over the same slides you'll be seeing. So, today, we're here to look for non-farm use activity regarding our film set. I also have some slides explaining the synergy between agricultural land and the film industry, and the products produced on the farm because of the revenue we receive from film. That's a slide of the film set actually being used by When Calls the Heart at the moment. Currently, we're seeking approval of non-farm use application with the Township of Langley and Agricultural Land Commission. The currently filming When Calls the Heart, it's a Hallmark production, also shown on a few other channels such as CBC and Netflix. The film revenue is put back into the land for agriculture gain. The film doesn't impact day-to-day operations of farming, and the buildings are on a skid system and do not disturb the soil below. The agriculture reclamation plan will be implemented on the land at the conclusion of the non-farm use activities. These are some more pictures of the film set. So the synergy between agricultural land and the film industry. Film always leaves places better than found. Greens departments work for the production company and ensure any fields, orchards, trees, lawns, and other places are not harmed during the filming process. Care is taken to lay down plywood before a shoot to prevent undermining of the soil when driving and transport of vehicles and cast is needed. This brings revenue and jobs into the Township of Langley, and we have full support of our neighbors. It allows farmers and landowners to make supplemental income to help with the increasing costs of farming. This is a little quote that I found, "The farmer is always the person in our economy that buys everything for retail, sells everything at wholesale, and pays freight both ways." John F. Kennedy. And I will introduce my sister Melanie, which will speak about the products produced and sold on our farm.
Hello, I'm Melanie McKinnis, I'm the daughter of Rod and Wendy McKinnis, who have been farming this land for over forty years. We, my husband, myself, have actually submitted a business plan along with this to eventually introduce, well, we've already started introducing five crops. So this year, we've been very busy, we've started with hops, honey, barley, if you can believe it in Langley, hazelnut plantation, cotton, we have the existing cottonwood, and I've also grafted my first three-hundred-and-fifty apple trees, which I am proud to say sixty percent made it, so, which is good for me. The farm gate sales include eggs, honey, and in-season organic vegetables, which I've also started a box now with some other home, other mothers and single mothers that were doing box deliveries, so it's been a fun adventure. And this is our trial hops field, so this year, my mom was involved, and our whole family, and neighbors, and people, we had about thirty people helping us pick these hops, and we also submitted thirty pounds of the wet hops, which is the hops straight from the plant to a brewery in Vancouver called Faculty Brewery, and it's actually going to be putting our hops in a contest at the new, at the Wet Hops Festival in Chilliwack. I also got into bees, so I went from one hive last year, I have five hives this year, and I've been busy with that, learning tons, and I'm also partnering with another apriest who is looking for farm land to have herbes, and we're going to increase the beehives to about thirty hives next year. The barley has been a really fun one, we've learned a ton, obviously, Langley isn't known for its barley, but it is something that microbreweries are really interested in having that local barley, this is malting barley, right here in Langley, so it's a really exciting opportunity here, and I just, we, last year, we hand-sized the whole field, this year, we actually brought a, by a cutting cutter and a thrashing machine from Alberta, brought it across the Rocky Mountains, and we cut the field last week, we got most of it off before the rain, but a little bit got wet, hopefully it'll stay dry this week. This is our existing cottonwood plantation, so we planted, my brother and my dad and I planted thirty-six acres of cottonwood trees, and they, they're now quite old, because the Scott paper mill shut down at the time when we were going to harvest that, so that was a lost opportunity, as farming sometimes happens. And so thank you for this opportunity, and we appreciate that, and we're excited about these opportunities that filming are giving to me as a next-generation farmer for the future of my plan, which hazelnuts and barley and hops, they're all crops that'll take five to ten years to manifest into a full-fledged farm that we might be more successful with. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I do have some questions from council, Consor Qualley.
Thanks for your presentation, thanks for being here. When's the brewery opening? We have everything you need there.
I know, we've got our fifty percent barley.
It looks like the hazelnuts, the hops, the honey, the barley, you could make some really good beer, I think.
We have a bit of a theme going with it.
I have some questions for Mr. Sanderson from his presentation, and maybe they...
My apologies for the slides, they kind of got some...
That's fine. In the information you were talking about, and just reading the staff report prior to you being here today, you're looking for a ten-year non-farm use sort of opportunity, but you've been filming there since oh-five, and in oh-eight, you built the set. Were you given a ten-year non-farm use in oh-eight, is that why, is this time up, is that why you're back now, or this is new because of the changes? Is that why you're back now, or this is new because of the changes?
Through the chair, Counsel Qualley, no, this is for a 10-year period beginning now. Through discussions with the Land Commission on the current operation, the advice was to submit for the non-farm use application. In looking at the requirements for the series and beyond, the 10-year period was considered to be appropriate for the application as part of the non-farm use. So non-farm use for a temporary 10-year period, beginning now.
Okay, I understood it was going forward for 10 years, but I wasn't sure if there was one that had already been in place.
No, there hadn't.
It's just because of the changes the ALC's put in?
That's correct.
Okay. And currently, you're using the property for filming five months a year. Is there an opportunity, once you have this permit or exclusion, temporary exclusion, to expand that and have perhaps 12 months a year rather than five?
I will defer to Kevin on this, he's more expert in this process.
Hi, right now, the ALC is asking for only 10 film days per year. You've probably had other, you've probably had experience with those come up in other council meetings. Yeah, basically, we can film all year right now. Right now, When Calls the Heart films from usually August till December, so that's the five-month period. On the remaining months, I have days where I have one or two films per month, and they're there for one or two days, then they leave.
So there are other opportunities, this isn't just exclusive to this one?
No.
Project? Okay, cool, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Davis.
Thank you very much. Just a quick, you'd commented on the filming revenue goes back into the agri part of the farm.
Yes.
Barley, we've grown barley for years and years, and that's, land just got too expensive in the valley here, so it's grown other ways, but it'll grow real well, you can see it.
Thank you.
Did a good job. Just to clarify, the township issued a building permit for 13 temporary structures on the property. Was that in 2005 or 2008?
It was in 2005, before we started building anything. We got a building permit, had all the buildings inspected by the township, and everything was approved.
So it's all, just a question that Counsel Qualley asked, and I didn't hear it. Are you, like, Mr. Mark said that 3% of the property is going to be used, is that, are you going up? Are you going to be having more?
No, that's what the film set actually takes up right now, and the parking on 248th Street. We are going to reclaimate some of the land currently down on 72nd Avenue, which is a gravel lot beside one of our barns.
The other thing is, I, when we had a food challenge in the summer, I stopped and bought a dozen of your eggs and some honey, and I drove in and did a little snoop, and I thought it was very smart to have them out of sight, out of mind, and as a different, as a land use, if everything's temporary, you know, if it's on skids and whatnot, I guess, okay, the, where I'm going is, yeah, I've already gone there, sorry. I just, okay, thanks very much, I just wanted to make a few comments on that.
How was the honey?
What's that?
How was the honey?
That was, oh, the honey was great.
Great, okay.
Just one comment, Mr., the existing use has actually been slightly reduced in terms of what we have right now, from around 3.5% to 3% of the land, so it's going down slightly because we're removing one of the parking lots and rejigging it to, so it's going down.
Sorry.
Did anybody get shot? Like, well, there's a cowboy scene, right?
Yeah.
Maybe, I don't know the movie, but...
Yeah, it's When Calls the Heart, it's a Hallmark drama, so it's very family-friendly.
So that would...
We have a mountie in it, but he never gets in trouble.
He never, the bad guys. I'm just curious about the surrounding, because if you shot a gunshot off when the horse show was on, you might have issues that way, but I guess you coordinate it.
Yeah, we work with Thunderbird, and whenever we have an explosion or a gunfire, that we speak to them first.
And it's not on weekends when they usually have the shows, it's during the weekdays when they're usually...
Filming.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Counsel Richter.
Yeah, so right now, the filming goes August to December, and that's been happening since 2005. So how many film days a year do you actually have?
With When Calls the Heart?
Yeah.
That would be Monday to Friday, three months of the year, and then in the, when they're not there, other shows use it for one or two days.
Okay, so, so in terms of the revenue that's generated from this farm, is more revenue coming from filming or from the farming activities?
Right now, it's a little bit more from farming, but we put all the money from the revenue of the film back into the farm.
So it's about 50/50 then, or 60/40 or whatever? And now, these new crops that you've been talking about, the barley and the bees and the, have they, have they been farmed since 2005? Like, what have you been farming?
So, I'm 37, and I just take that because I had to, I went off the farm and I actually took geography and GIS and got a job, and my husband and I are actually, I work nights and then I farm during the day because to supplement our income, we had to do that. And we also learned what we wanted to do with this property, and we had to make a decision as new farmers whether we actually wanted to pursue this dream or not, because it's not an easy thing to do. So we made the decision that we were going to move forward, and we've gone, jumped two feet in, and so that's what took, we were holding back because we were a bit worried about the amount of time it takes to farm and the stress of farming.
So since 2005?
During 2005, we were farming cottonwood trees, which we planted in 1994.
And they were never harvested?
They have been harvested on and off. They grow back from their root, their stump system, their hybrids, and we've been farming those for the last...
And then we've also had some cattle on and off grazing, and so we've had other farm activities, but the new hazelnuts, that started two years ago.
Started two years ago, okay. And so I'm assuming you're paying the agricultural tax rates?
Yep.
Yeah, farm tax rates, okay.
Yeah, we've stayed farming the whole time.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's no further questions from council, I just want to say it sounds like a pretty exciting venture. I can relate to you working nights off-farm and working the farm during the day, and you can only do that when you're young, I'll tell you that.
Yes.
And good for you, and there's a study, just a comment, there's a study that, from Census Canada, and not a study, but a report from Census Canada that Metro Vancouver put out, and it states that in Langley, 48% of all farm operators rely on off-farm income to subsidize the farm, and it shows entrepreneurial spirit of how hard you have to work to make something go, so kudos to you. So, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for allowing us to bring this in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so as I stated earlier, when we approved the agenda, we moved F7 to come right directly after the delegations, and following that will be F4, and then we'll go back to our regular agenda. So F7 is, Devanda Nurseries Limited, there is a motion there, and I would ask council, there's a one, there's two options. One is that we consider exclusion inclusion, and the other is that we not authorize it. So I would submit that we have a motion on, that we consider the exclusion. So Counsel Whitmarsh and Counsel Qualley, sorry, Counsel Long seconded, yep. And so discussion on the motion. That's the first one, that the council consider the exclusion inclusion, so it's the first one, not the one that starts after or. So that's what's on the floor. Any discussion? Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, I think this is a great plan for this area. This is a plan that brings forth a change in the location of where the land is, it's in the ALR, it actually increases the land, seems like maybe a small amount, but it actually is a 15% increase in ALR land. Anytime we get an opportunity to increase ALR land, we should be taking that. And the added part of that is that this allows us to strengthen the community of Milner, and so it gives us opportunity down the road to look at some other options for Milner and strengthen the community. So strengthening the community and 15% increase in ALR makes it a no-brainer for me, I'll be supporting it.
Thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thanks, I agree with Counsel Whitmarsh. I was, I had the opportunity to do a little tour of the nurseries over the summer, and the amount of food that's being produced there is unbelievable, the amount of fruit that's coming out of those nurseries. It's not just plants, and although I do appreciate the opportunity for the drive-through plants and reeds during the holidays, hopefully that won't change, but I think this is a really great opportunity for a lot of different reasons. So I'll be supporting the application, and hopefully they'll be successful in their projects and their plans with the ALC.
Okay, thank you. I see no further discussion, so I'll call a question on F7. And it carries with Counsel Arnesson opposed. And we move now to F4, and this is the Provincial Agricultural Land Commission application, McInnes at 2516072 Avenue. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, seconded by Counsel Qualley. Discussion on F4. Counsel Richter. Counsel Richter.
You know, I think this is a very creative way to encourage young farmers to get into farming, and we know from some reports that have come to us lately how we're losing young farmers, so this is a good way to encourage young farmers, and I'm supportive of it from that, from that perspective. The question that I did have was about the actual number of filming days, and I think this is a question that I'll have to refer to staff, because we've had other delegations that have come to us very concerned that there's an inequitable allocation of filming days amongst rural properties in the township. So if we were to approve this, if we were to approve this, would that mean that other filming properties would get less filming days, or are they as eligible as this property is to apply for three- and five-month filming permits?
Mr. Mackin.
Thank you, Your Worship. The equity issue was raised by a delegation before, as they indicated some other properties in the area were receiving filming. The issue in that situation was neighbours' concerns and neighbours' response. As it turned out, the area in the neighbourhood was in a different location, and therefore in a different part of the area, and therefore didn't have the impact on the neighbours, where the parties that were expressing their delegation to council were in an area that had a high impact, high visibility, and was affecting the neighbours more so, and that was where the regulation of the filming days were coming in and the apparent inequity. In effect, it was responding to neighbour concerns. In this situation, it's a little bit different, because they're seeking a non-farm use for a continued use of the, for the three months of the year. This use is generated by the history of the property and as well by, again, its location. There is no rationing of, I guess, filming days between the various properties, provided the neighbours are in support, and by all indications, the neighbours are in support on this application. The challenge that they're facing is really of the 10-day rule that's now come into play. Effectively, if we say they're going for 100 days of year, they're the year now because of the three months constant, which is an exaggeration, and then the other couple days per year, that's well above the 10 days per year that they're in theory allowed, and that's hence why they're seeking the variation. And as the neighbours are not expressing any concerns, staff are recommending the non-farm use endorsement.
Okay, but is there the potential that we might run the risk that by endorsing this and sending it off to the ALC, that they might then say, okay, this farm gets the full quota of film days for all of the township, no other farm in the township can therefore apply?
I don't think so. The commission will be looking at this on a case-by-case basis, so if there are certain parcels that are looking for extra filming, it's really the adjudication of the non-farm use. If they were to take that decision-making to other properties, those other properties would have the right to be heard and be considered, and I don't think that's how they would process it. I think they're much more likely to look at the impact on farming, and as the delegation has expressed, they've done many things to make it a very temporary use. So I don't see equity or legal issues arising. The equity is based on the response of the neighbours. The 10-day rule is really what's coming into play, and that'll be governed by the Land Commission's interpretation of the applicability of this property for being exempt from those processes.
Okay, and the last question that I wanted to raise was about tax income, and where a portion of this property is going to have 10 years of dedicated filming on it, and revenues, like half of the farm income is coming from the filming industry, should there be or can there be, or is this something the ALC even looks into, an adjustment of the tax rates for that portion of the farm that's used for filming?
So the ALC wouldn't have jurisdiction over the tax rates, it would be the BC Assessment Authority, and they would have to assess if for the 3% they indicated the predominant use is filming, if that then constitutes a different use than the rural or the farm use. There is a likelihood, I think that that small area could be reassessed. We see many properties that are, for example, 80 acres in total, but there might be 77 acres farming and three acres for a small-based, home-based business or a commercial activity that's on the property. This area might be considered that way by the Assessment Authority.
Okay, and how does the Assessment Authority get alerted to that?
Usually, they do rural inspections, so I would suspect that they have an idea what's going on in the place of this property because of the structures and dwellings, as well through our processes, when there's buildings put up by the building permit process, the Assessment Authority is notified as well about the creation of the structures, and they often inquire about the uses.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Arnesson.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I'm quite taken with this, actually, particularly after the presentation that was given about the, sort of the novel way that this has been worked out and to enhance the actual farm use. And I also like the idea that much care seems to have been taken to make sure that there's no long-term negative impact on the agricultural viability of that property. I guess my question is more having to do, through Your Worship, to staff, is there any opportunity? I have a sense that this would be coming up more often, given the Agricultural Land Commission and the changes, and so rather than just having an ad hoc kind of process where we're viewing these individually, if there might be an opportunity for us to have more of a formal policy having to do with this. So we'd still maintain oversight, however, it would just take away for me a bit of the ad hoc approach, because I do think that this is something that we're going to see, maybe not on a regular basis, but more often, given the changes.
Your Worship, you're likely correct. The approach that the Land Commission is taking is really on a parcel-by-parcel basis, meaning that non-farm use must be considered on an application-by-application basis. Previously, our process was to look at it more from a community planning and impact approach, and we would then, as was referenced, allocate the days based on community input and confirmation that there wasn't going to be a significant impact on the property. That overall higher overarching approach is not the approach of today, unfortunately. We were much closer to that before, and with the recent changes in the Land Commission that we've seen, they seem to be going to a much more case-by-case pragmatic approach. So at this point, our recommendation to them will be that we find a more holistic approach, but this is the only tool that they're using at this point to deal with these filming activities.
And would that be, Mr. Mackin, due to provincial legislation, that this needs council approval to forward on to the Agricultural Land Commission?
That's correct, the non-farm use must go to council first.
Okay, thank you. I see no further discussion, so I'll now call a question on F4. And it carries unanimously. So now we move on to F1, and it's the Gateway Transportation Collaboration Forum Studies Update, and that, there's some copies of the studies in our agenda, and also there are some projects that were asked to confirm, as identified in the report. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Fox, seconded, or Counsel Whitmarsh, any questions, discussion by council? Seeing, Counsel Davis.
Sorry, I had a couple questions. Okay, this is the, I guess the first question, maybe through the staff, I see Mr. Cudero there. Who was, who from the township was in on the study, or was anybody from the township in on it, or, and were we voting members, or were we just observers?
Mr. Seffy?
Thank you, Your Worship. The process has been that there have been partners, key partners, including Transport Canada, the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure provincially, Translink, and the railway companies who have been the partners, and Port Metro Vancouver, or whatever their current name is, as the project partners going forward. The municipalities, unlike the previous Roberts Bank Rail corridor program, have not been involved at the part... involved at the partner level in terms of their decision-making, but rather consulted with stakeholders. And our staff have been involved to that level of providing input, or attending meetings whenever opportunities have presented themselves.
So we just have, we had input. We didn't have any, like, any direction? Like, I guess where I'm going with that is, if you look on, like, some of their, I'm a little flustered here, sorry. On some of these, on some of the reports here, like, if you look at, on page 70, they've got a new road, they're going to shut down three railroad crossings, they're going to send an overpass over top of Glover Road, right through a greenhouse, or right beside a greenhouse, and then access it between two of the biggest greenhouses, well, one of the biggest greenhouses in Western Canada, Bevco, and then, and they're going to close down Glover Road, they're going to join Glover Road and put a frontage road down here for agriculture, and we didn't have a say in it? That's the part, I guess, where I'm going.
Your Worship, we did have a say in the process wherever projects were being presented or recommended for future consideration in the Township of Langley. So we've had, we've had input in those cases, but no real decision-making authority. Our input has just been that, just input. And I have to also add that the projects that you see being presented are really at a very conceptual stage for the purpose of preparing submissions to the senior levels of government for federal funding, and they have not been through a design process.
Well, that scares me, because we're voting on this, and it says, "The council received copies of study undertaken by the Gateway Transportation Cooperation Forum in the Fraser River and the Roberts Bank area and confirmed the list of projects as identified in this report for future implementation." Now, that's a mouthful. I said it real fast, but I'm scared, because somebody, somewhere, is making decisions in our township for the Langley, in the township. And I don't let, you know, I'm just, I'm concerned about that, when you put a future implementation there. Could I move, unless maybe somebody else wants to? I have a motion. Should I run it by you?
So you can move amendments. The motion is on the floor. So you can move amendments to this motion, if there's something you need to amend.
Can we? I guess, no, I don't have anything to amend, but we have a new agriculture minister. Could we send this report to her and get her feedback? On what?
That's, that would be, you can add that to it as an amendment if you wished, that we should copies, and the copies have been submitted, but the studies are, are not our studies. I'm sure Mr. Macken may, because I don't think the ministry of agriculture has anything to do with this.
Your Worship, it could be referred to the appropriate ministry for consultation. I wanted to come back to one comment, though, that might assist. We are now traversing from concepts to detail. I think it's quite wise to notice some of the concepts that they have expressed, while valid, probably don't have the appropriate level of detail. What we're seeking to do is simply have the township council confirm that in the area where they identify potential problems because of the fact they may be heavy train traffic or worse, they may be having sightings now where trains will be parked and therefore the roads will be totally blocked, that it's appropriate to say have grade separation. The form of that grade separation has to be worked out with such parties, such as the Land Commission, for example, in terms of the impact on agriculture. That would take some time and would likely be on an application-by-application basis. The only heads-up, we would say, is that on a push, if a push-came-to-shove basis, because it's federal, federal legislation does take priority over provincial legislation. So the federal government, if they really chose to, could build additional rail capacity without consulting. This is their process, to consult through the Gateway Program with the stakeholders to identify how the communities, how the region will be affected, hopefully, and neutralize some of the impacts of these longer, bigger trains that are going to be going through town and as well being stopped.
Okay, I heard everything there, but what my concern is, all of a sudden, in two or three or four years, hey, sorry, guys, this has been going down the pike for four or five years. What are you worried about? Like, I just want to stink where I should at the right time, right?
But there's a long, Mr. Macken, there'd be a long process prior to any projects being approved and funded, and there's Agricultural Land Commission, Township of Langley, there's some of these projects, they're looking at funding from Township of Langley. We'd have to be involved once we get to that type of detail. This is more the list of projects that they've identified through their study. And in the report, it talks a lot about how long the trains are going to be, how many more trains are going to be, so they're trying to address some of that. Would it be fair to say this is fairly early on the process, and there'd be quite an extensive process to follow?
That's correct. From our perspective, there's a number of designs that are non-starters. I look, for example, at the reference to Glover Road and 216 Street. The design they proposed there in terms of the frontage road and realigning it and bisecting farmland is something that we would not be supporting. While they do have the jurisdiction to do that unilaterally, all this is really tempting to do is instead say, we believe we should have grade separation at these critical areas, and they're trying to actually come up with some concepts. So just as the Mufford Overpass had an original design, it was morphed as a result of consultation with community members and the farming community. This is really saying, do we want to see grade separation at these critical points? And that's what this is about, but as councillor Davis points out, we may wish to indicate that we'd like a larger role in the process, as would every community, because as Mr. Seffy pointed out, we have been participants, we have made comments, but I'm not sure to what extent we've been heard.
Just to add, Your Worship, it's not just grade separation, it includes other safety measures, such as whistle cessation and the RCIS program, which is the Rail Corridor Information System implementation.
Okay, I hear it. But like you referred to the Mufford Overpass, we all had to go crazy to get anybody to listen, and that's what I'm worried about. I just, it says on this piece of paper, final. Like, what's the final mean? Like, that's, anyhow, okay, I think I've taken enough time. I'm, I don't want to not vote for this, but I kind of should not vote for it, because I'm leery, and that's maybe not the right way, that's maybe not an approach I should be taking. Anyhow, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I understand that this is the overarching document that's just setting out certain parameters. However, I would share the same concerns as councillor Davis. I'm not necessarily sure that these agencies have a really good historical record in making sure that they are directing themselves towards things like the alienation of land in the LR. And so, to the degree secondarily, that at what point is the township going to have our input into this process with respect to a more detailed plan? I think that that is something that I find to be very significant and important. And finally, my thought in reading this report is perhaps with council support, we might consider a future CPC presentation to discuss some of the different parameters around this, like Mr. Macken was just referring to the fact of, well, some of them might be a non-starter, but, you know, it might be better for council as a whole to start discussing those things so that we could immediately just, you know, take those out of the equation and focus on the ones that we really did want. Because I do get the feeling that once preliminary discussions happen, without intervening in some way and saying that we want to be a stronger voice in the process along with the other stakeholders, that, you know, we could just be left with what other decision-makers have decided on our behalf. So I wouldn't support that.
Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, and that's my concern as well, because the phrasing of the recommendation and confirm the list of projects? Well, I'm being asked, as a voting member of this council, to confirm a list of projects when I don't have any clear understanding that those are the projects that are best for the township. We've got somebody here saying that these, and once we confirm these, is this the type of motion that's going to come back and haunt us in the future, saying things like, well, the council of 2017 approved it, so you're locked into these projects? I would like to, I mean, is there any real reason why we have to vote on this today? Is there, like, a pressing deadline?
Mr. Macken?
Your Worship, I don't believe so. Mr. Seffy will comment, but just in hearing the comments, council simply may want to receive the copy of the study and leave it at that for this time, and then we can determine if we want to have further presentations or information on it, and I'll let Mr. Seffy comment now.
That's correct, Your Worship. If council wishes to just simply either divide the recommendation and receive and then vote on the confirmation, or just simply just deal with the first part, it's up to council. There is no urgency nor a need for council to confirm these, because there is no request for funding contribution. These are just simply for the partners to make sure that they are able to submit the applications to the federal government and the provincial government for funding contribution.
Yeah, well, and, you know, the projects that are on the confirmed list, like, two of them are in the city, which means we're going to have to be giving money to the city again. So I like the suggestion of dividing the motion and receiving the report, but I'd like to defer, or refer, defer the confirmation to after a presentation from the agency addressing why these projects, these specific projects, are in the township's best interest.
Would you like to move division?
Yes, I'm going to move division to start.
So second, move division. Councillor Davis, just show of hands, all those in favor of division? Opposed? Everyone's in favor? It's carried. So now we'll just discuss the receipt, and is there any questions on receipt? Councillor Fox, did you want to wait? You had, okay. So at this point, I will call a question on receipt only. So now councillor Fox, if you want to push your button again. There you go. So now we'll be on to confirm the list of projects identified in this report for further implementation. Councillor Fox?
Well, I'm sensing my machine's gone nuts. This report doesn't, my iPad doesn't like this report. Is everybody blinking out? Okay, well, mine's blinking out. So quite frankly, I need a presentation, and I would endorse what councillor Richter said, and I think we should.
So we just need to refer a motion, then, to the second portion?
A referral motion to a, no, a staff and agency presentation.
Presentation. Would that be more appropriate at CPC or a future council meeting, when it can be arranged?
More flexibility to CPC, Your Worship, because we can then inquire about the agency. Mr. Seffy, the agency's availability, in your experience, would they be prepared to do so?
The partners have engaged consultants who are working with them, so I would imagine Parsons, for example, is the consultant that staff have met with with regard to the Fraser River Trade Area process, and I would imagine that they would be able to speak on behalf of the partners and make a presentation, so we could make the request.
So then the motion would be referral to future CPC, with proviso that we invite the appropriate parties to come make a presentation along with staff. Is that correct?
That's correct, Your Worship. And just so that we understand the context, I don't believe we're being asked to contribute to this process financially. It's their process, and the question was asked, why would this be in the best interest of the township? It may not be. It may be in the national interest. Their concern is flow of trains and the parking of the trains. The impact on the local communities are why the local communities aren't part of the task force.
That's correct. And I know in the past, this local community has been pretty vocal in looking for solutions to the amount of trains that are coming through our community and how we, you know, alleviate some of the congestion that's being caused by it. So I know that's been ongoing, and this certainly, but I certainly would support more information coming from the Metall of Council. So the motion is on the floor. I need a second to the motion, to the referral. Councillor Richter seconded, sorry, I missed that. So I'll just carry on this discussion. Councillor Richter, on the referral motion.
Yeah, and I think that the agency should be asked to explain what the impacts on this community are going to be, what flexibility we have in terms of changing those impacts or mitigating those impacts. And I'd also like to have the opportunity to voice our concerns and the issues that we think need to be addressed. We've got a great deal of history with the train and train volume and train crossings, and I just don't think we should be roadkill on this one. I think our voices need to be heard, so.
And that would, there'd be opportunity for questions, especially in CPC environment. We can have a good dialogue with the consultants or whoever they send out, and certainly we have concerns on both sides.
So it should probably be a full CPC dedicated to nothing else but this now.
Well, let's see, yeah, we'll let staff decide that, yeah. We'll get that going. Okay, so let's on referral with that caveat. I'll call a question. And carries unanimously. And we'll move on to F2, Budget Revisions for Grant Awards. So somebody wants to give us money. Councillor Long moves it, seconded by councillor Fox. Any questions? Discussion? Councillor Fox?
Discussion, Your Worship. It's so nice to see this moving along, especially the second bullet point of 16th Avenue. Thank you, thank you. Just a quick question related to that, as I understand it, the, this can't proceed until 2018, when we make the second budget submission to Translink, I think it's $571,000, in addition to the $794,000. Is that correct? So it would be a 2018, summer of 2018 project?
Regarding 16th Avenue, Your Worship, that's correct.
Yeah. Okay, and I'm assuming, based on the verbiage in this report, that it's pretty much a done deal, because it, on the bottom of page two, it says, "Staff have recently received the project agreement from Translink." So obviously, if Translink agrees with the project, then they're going to agree with the $571,000. I would assume that that's a kind of a rubber stamp. Is that fair to say?
Seffy? He's sort of nodding his head, yes?
Fair to assume, yes, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Okay, then, as my grandson would say, get the upperdigger ready and going as soon as possible.
Upperdigger. Okay. Councillor Davis, you probably have an upperdigger on your farm.
Okay, this $1,492 from Transport Canada, it's part of the Railway Safety Improvement Program, that, they're going to double that to make it $3 million?
Your Worship, there's, there's one and a half million dollars as part of the Township of Langley's contribution towards a project already approved by council from the 2017, in the 2017 budget.
And that, and that goes to the 72nd and?
240th.
240th. That's where the, okay. Is the B.C., as the Liberals introduced an upgrade on Number One Highway, is that tied in somehow? Because it?
He says no.
So they may, that may get squashed anyhow, but I'm just, because they're going to put an over, okay, I'm just looking ahead. They were thinking of putting an overpass over the freeway for 72nd, and how long would that have gone for? Or does it, two of them, are they totally separate, won't even meet?
They're separate, but they would be connected, so if that project went ahead, it would just dovetail into this project, because what this is going to do is take the hill, reduce the grade to do so. You're going to extend the hill, the foot of the hill out further, and then put a crossing, rail crossing, arms at the top.
Yeah, so we have, well, this is part to do with, this is tied in with the truck route initiatives, because we, yeah, okay, that's all, thanks.
Okay. Any other, oh, councillor Long?
Yeah, I mean, I recognize all of these improvements, and people have spoken to, and I just want to make sure that we also acknowledge and are grateful to the walking infrastructure improvements, which will help access to the recreational center.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none, I'm going to call a question on F2. And it carries unanimously. F3 is Railway Crossing Safety Improvements. This is a railway theme today, and there's a motion there, if I can have a mover for the, councillor Fox, seconded. Councillor Davis, discussion. Councillor Richter?
Yeah, I'm just a little unclear on the funding on this. So the federal government has said these upgrades have to be done by 2021, but have they downloaded the costs of these upgrades to municipalities?
Your Worship, it's not a question of downloading, it's actually being mandated as something that the municipalities have to undertake because of the fact that we are the owners of the assets, but to work with the railway companies and seek contributions from them whenever possible. from them whenever possible, and also the federal government has provided or will be providing grant opportunities throughout the country.
So do the railways pay anything? I mean, they're the ones that have caused the problems here.
Yes, your worship, there are contributions being made by the railway companies.
Are they equal to the contributions that the municipalities are making?
Mostly.
Mostly, okay. So this money that we have to put in, the $6 million, are we going to get that $6 million from other sources?
Your worship, there's a table that's under the financial implications section of the report that provides a breakdown by project and by, I guess, funding opportunity. So there are opportunities for the township to continue to seek grants, and we'll do that, and if we are successful, the municipal contributions will be reduced.
Okay. Is there any way we can lobby the federal government? I know there's been talk in the past of putting a container tax on in order to finance some of this stuff. Like, I just think it's really unfair that these improvements are being funded on the back of property owners. Like, we don't get anything out of it. We're just spending money on it. Like, can we lobby to get alternate sources of funds?
Would it be fair to say, Mr. Seffy, that staff are always looking for opportunities for funding from other levels of government, and that they continue to do so on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct, worship. It's also been an issue of concern for both FCM and UBCM, and at that level, there's been a lot of lobbying going on and actions being taken. And I guess in part to date, that's why there has been some grant money provided.
Yeah, so we'll continue those efforts. Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Just on page 86, they got a disclaimer, and they... I just thought, we've paid a lot of money for this, and well, I guess...
You don't have an 86. What is it?
Well, it's three pages in. Anyhow, the disclaimer says that they don't have any responsibility if they make an error. I just wanted to bear that in mind. Who, if I could ask, maybe through Mayor Feroz, who did the assessment? Did the Township of Langley do it, or did the railroad people do it?
They had a consultant hired. Township of Langley hired a consultant.
So now, the consultant did it, and his name was... Well, I can't think. Anyhow, so they did the... Okay, the next thing is, how many private crossings do we have, and how many... They say we did this assessment, 29. You know what? I'm going to speed this up, because I see Charlie's head falling, and he's going to get bored. I guess what I... I noticed in the report...
You have a floor, or what?
I've hit the... In the report, it kind of bothers me, and I don't know who to ask about this, but the report is not always the same. You've got responsibility here, you've got road authority, you've got the railroad company, who's responsible, then you've got the priority. And on a question, I guess, I would have sightlines. All the sightlines were different on every one of the things. Like, so when somebody... When the person went out and sat there, and they went out and sat and watched and observed, did they not have a... Because lots of it, they had problems with the gate, armed descents, delays were less for a WB-19 vehicle. I want to know what that is to start with, but I guess... And they had spots here where cyclists didn't get off their bike and demount. They went into traffic, and then there was lots that didn't have stickers on the right poles, and there was lots that sightlines... They didn't even have a sightline on it. So when they did the study, did the fellow not have 25 or 40 questions that he had to answer and tick off? Like, or was it in his interpretation? Because if it's in his interpretation, boy, we could be spending money or saving a lot of money, or one of the other. I guess that's the question that I... Does anybody know how this report was done?
Mr. Seffy, on how the consultant conducted the surveys?
Yes, your worship, the expert is actually in the house, Mr. Cordero. If I can ask him to maybe come to the front and maybe do an impromptu presentation in lieu of a future CPC referral potentially?
Thank you.
I can tell by Mr. Cordero's ache, he's excited.
Thank you, your worship. So I guess I can start off by saying that Hatchmont did the study on all 29 public crossings. They looked at public crossings, because those are the ones that the township is responsible for. So yes, there are numerous private crossings, but that is the responsibility of the private owner and the railway company to deal with. In terms of looking at the different requirements, the consultant followed what the requirements are in the new grade crossing standards and the grade crossing regulations. So every crossing could be a little bit different, depending upon the angle, the width of the road, the type of traffic, the adjacent land use, and the type of control that's actually at the crossing right now. So if there's stop signs, there's a certain criteria for sight distance. If there's gates and flashers, there's actually no requirement for sight distance, because it's assumed that all the vehicles are stopped at the gates. So that's why every crossing can be a little bit different.
Okay. The other thing, just quickly, do you know what a... Do you know what a... Jeez, what the heck is the... It was an option where there was no sightlines, or it didn't have any sightlines in it, but the sightlines failed, so they had to put an F... Was it an F1? An F1 gateway?
There's flashing... It's called an FLB.
FLB, that's right.
And that's flashing lights and bells, and then we sometimes add gates as well.
Okay.
So if there's no sightlines, and we can't achieve the sightlines with clearing, then we have to put in the full warning system, flashing lights, bells, and gates.
Okay, that's... Okay, the other thing is, so we're going to... It's going to cost us roughly $6 million to get our grades up to par.
That's the current estimate, yeah.
Okay. Well, because if we believe... We just received that F1 gateway transportation study, and if they're going to close Smith Glover at Jardine there, where the old cheese plant used to be at the turn of the century, and Whirl, why are we paying to upgrade those?
As mentioned earlier, the GTCF is a very long-term program. We only noted the projects that were identified within the township or within the Langleys, and there's actually numerous other projects identified in both those reports that will be looked at in the next several years.
And just in conclusion, the gate armed descent delays were less for a WB-19 vehicle. Do you know what that is?
A WB-19 is essentially a tractor trailer with, I believe it's a... There's a WB-20, which is a longer trailer, and a WB-19 is a slightly shorter trailer.
And a silage truck. I know that for a fact. Okay. Because at Crush Crescent, the crossing arms, they dissent too fast, and that could be why I got a report this morning from Mufford that over 20 arms have been taken down in the last year and a half there, and that could be an issue. But so, okay, so that's fine, answered my questions. Thank you. I just worried about that disclaimer. Like, why would we pay somebody, and then him say, "Well, we don't want to..." I guess we do that with our accountants. I guess we do that. Anyhow, it just kind of bothers me.
And disclaimer, yeah, thank you. Counselor Fox?
Thank you. My question is related to redundancy. We're spending $6 million here on these crossing safety improvements, yet we just had a report done, the previous, this Gateway Transportation Collaboration Forum. So we're going to spend $6 million in the next very short while to upgrade these. Is there redundancy on what this Gateway Transportation Collaboration Forum is expecting us to do or expecting to be done in the next X number of years? So...
Mr. Seffy, there may be...
Looking short term, long term?
There may be a couple of projects that would be changed if it was to go ahead with rail separation, that then the money would have been spent for not. But I don't think it would be more in the township, more than two or three projects.
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Any other questions on F3? Seeing none, call a question. And carries unanimously. We'll move on to F5, Provincial Agriculture Land Commission Application, 100321, Borro Farm Incorporated. Have a motion, please? Counselor Long, and seconded by Counselor Fox. Discussion on F5. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, this was already turned down in 2007, so...
Got you.
Why are we allowing it to go back? I mean, it doesn't make sense. You're taking a 60-acre property and dividing it in two, and you're not even dividing it equally into two.
Question, was it turned down by this council or by ALC? I missed that. ALC? Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, seeing nothing further, I'm going to call the question on F5. And that fails with Counselor Richter, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Qualley, Counselor Spurrow, Counselor Davis, opposed. And we go to F6, Provincial Agriculture Land Commission Application, 100324, Dole on 272 Street. Have a motion, please? Have a motion. Counselor Fox, second. I need a second. Counselor... Sorry? I just need a second.
Can I speak?
Sure.
So would there be a motion then to revise our zoning requirements, that 20 acres is not the minimum size anymore for agriculture?
Well, that's... Okay, we'll...
I'm just putting it out there, because that would be the logical next step.
We're dealing with this F6. I have a mover. I need a second. Could I have a second, please? Counselor Long, are you seconding F6?
Sure.
Okay, second by you. Counselor Long, discussion on F6. Oh, here we go. Counselor... Oh, you're on. You were still on. Do you want... Just push your button again. There you go, you're on.
Okay, worship. So I mean, we do have a bylaw that's been around forever and a day, that 20 acres is the minimum size that we... And it complies with our plan, that 20 acres is what we allow, is what's permitted. So if we're not going to permit them, then why would we have that as a policy in our bylaw? So anyway, that's why I have to vote for it, because it's on there. And I guess, and as it says in the report, that the land commission, it's their job to determine whether that's a wise decision for the farmland, because I'm not a farmer. Thank you. Counselor Davis?
Thank you. I was digging in my afternoon or my regular evening meetings. I failed to comment on the last, but it's okay. First point, based on, as Counselor Long is maybe bringing, based on agricultural merits, that we would... The minimum lot size requirements, I think that's got a lot to do with change. Number two is subdividing this piece of property is not a good way for farm succession planning. Cutting any piece of property up, there's lots of other ways around getting your children in, and he's got four or five points here of setting up his children, crop sharing companies. I mean, there's... But I don't believe that subdividing is a good way, because that's how he wants to use it. Number three, it was refused in 1994, and it's an 88-piece, 88-acre piece, and I don't believe that it should be cut up into four pieces. And the last comment... Sorry?
Sorry, I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the same page as you. Sorry.
Oh, well.
Are you talking about this F6?
Oh, F6.
Okay.
Yeah, F6. If you... Okay, did I... Should I?
No, you're right. I was reading ahead. I was reading ahead, sorry.
Okay, anyhow, I just... They talked about both these, the last application and this application, talked about harvesting times and all that sort of stuff, and I don't know if that should have a lot to do with deciding to cut up farmland. So I guess I maybe I've made my points. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Qualley?
Thank you. I mean, I understand the comments that Counselor Long made earlier about the last application. I'm going to support this one, because it hasn't already had an opinion from the ALC. So this one has... Oh, this one? Sorry, was F... Oh, it has?
Thirty-some, 20-some years ago.
Okay. I think, you know, we're just... We're bogging down the ALC with all of this stuff, and I feel like we have so many important things for the ALC to deal with that we're just struggling with, and how are they going to get the things done when they are... When they're having to reject the same applications over and over? So I... Yeah, I don't know. I understand that it meets the criteria, but I wish the ALC would get their act together. Seriously, this is the bane of my existence. So I probably should have supported the last one in the same sense that I'm going to support this one, but I... Or maybe I shouldn't support this one. I don't know. The ALC drives me crazy.
Your worship, just as a comment, because we're in a difficult spot, I realize that. The statement is that it complies with their zoning bylaw. The applicant is therefore entitled to know how it does not comply, will be asked for reasons. That's why we try to avoid the endorsement, not endorsement. Council could, in theory, and I hate to go down this path, but say that it complies, but we do not endorse, because that will then trigger, in all likelihood, the need to revisit the zoning situation as a whole, because then the zoning's inconsistent with our endorsement. So I'm simply saying that it might be prudent to provide reasons as to why it does not comply, or an elaboration, depending upon what happens as part of the application.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yeah, a lot of things have changed since our rural plan was put together, and one of the things that's changed is the importance of locally grown food. And I just don't see taking an 88-acre parcel and dividing it into four. We have so few 88-acre parcels left in the township. I don't see how that's supporting agriculture going forward, so I'm not voting for this.
Thank you. Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. I don't support this either, partly because I don't think it's good succession planning that we're just dividing these properties up. I had to sift back way in my mind to the seigneurial system, I think that they used to have, where they made strips of land, and every oldest son got one of those. Not that it's necessarily that analogous, but there comes a point in which you have to look at what I think our reasonable expectation is. But if I could, through your worship, to Mr. Back, and I just wanted to try and figure out some way, if we are saying that we don't want to send this forward to the Agricultural Land Reserve, are you suggesting that the only thing that we're being asked for at this point is whether or not it complies with our minimum lot size? That's it. And so I'm sort of feeling I'm voting in conflict with what our actual regulations are.
Thank you for providing the example, because I think there could be... There might be a way through this. I think what you're saying is that one could interpret... You're not saying anything. One could interpret that, well, yes, it complies. We disagree with the minimum lot size as being 20 acres. The approach then could be that we confirm it comply. Well, we could say we defer any issue of whether it complies or not till we go through a process to rezone the property to 80 acres. Then they've got the right to be heard about their upzoning in this process. That would avoid a complete review of the rural plan, but deal with the issue of saving some of the larger parcels, because our challenge is, there may be strong reasons as to why we should not be supporting any sort of subdivision, but we've been very careful not to be endorsing subdivisions or rejecting subdivisions. We've been simply giving them a statement that it does comply till we change the zoning. So the answer may be then, on any of these applications, once we learn the disposition of it, to then say, "We'll refer it to staff for a zoning to accommodate the parcel size." Mr. Seffy, any comments?
Your worship, as Mr. Back referenced, the alternative would be to refer the applications back to staff with the recommendation or direction to consider the zoning bylaw amendment, not the rural plan amendment, but rather the zoning bylaw amendment, to eliminate the possibility or the potential for subdivision. And I would point out the, I guess, the provincial legislation that the Agricultural Land Commission currently works under, allow for consideration by the land commission of subdivision applications by owners of land. So there may have to be a request, I guess, or a referral to the provincial government to consider that provision as well.
Thank you. And yeah, and just to reiterate, these have to come in front of us due to provincial legislation. It is a requirement that council ensure that these applications do fit within our zoning bylaws, and that's... and that's basically all we're doing. And looking at the reports from the Agricultural Land Commission, they have not been approving too many of these. And because it is their role to look at it from, from all those other comments that were made here today, and I still like to leave it in their hands for that. But nevertheless, it's, it's in front of us again, and for, for very good reasons, it's provincially legislated. Counselor Long?
Well, thanks, Your Worship. There was a comment made that things have changed. Well, I don't think growing food has changed. We've always needed to grow food, okay? That's part of, of life. But what has changed is the affordability of farming. And we just went through that this afternoon with the other application. It is a real challenge to maintain a farm. The other thing that's happened here is we've got this report from the Metro saying that the amount, the number of farms is reducing. The affordability of running a farm is becoming a real challenge. Here, you would actually take one farm and make four out of it. So that would be increasing the amount of farms in the township. But as the report says, we do not have the expertise at this table to assess the application for agricultural perspective or its, or its uses. We don't. Maybe one person does, but that's why it's being forwarded to the ALC for their consideration. So lots of things have changed, but we always know that we have to grow food. But we also have to make farming affordable, and we have to follow the regulations that we put into place. And there's probably good reason why we put it. We didn't just pick a number out of the, out of the hat. 20 acres is still quite a large piece of property. So I, I, I can't see how council can reject these things. If we want to encourage farming, we've got to make it affordable as well.
Thank you, Counsel Davis.
Sorry, I just, I just comment, in the recommendation summary, it says, the subdivision, subdivision complies with the minimum lot size requirements of the township zoning by law and requests consideration based on agricultural merits. Because that's, that's, that's wide open. We could, you know, everyone, everyone's got their input on what is, is based on agricultural merit. So, because at this point, does that not give us a bit of freedom to say, well, you know, geez, I don't think it's got agricultural merit?
Just to clarify, that's requesting the commission consider it based on agricultural merit. Our statement is whether it complies.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see no further discussion. I'll now call a question on F6. And it carries with Counselor Richter, Counselor Arneson, Counselor Sperrle, and Counselor Davis opposed. And Ms. Bauer, Counselor Qualley has just asked me regarding the reconsideration of F5, and would it be appropriate to do that now or in other business? She wishes to bring it back for reconsideration as a member of council who voted on the prevailing side.
Now would be fine.
Now would be fine, okay. And does that need a mover and seconder, or for, for Counsel Qualley? So Counsel Qualley can move it. Okay, so Counsel Qualley.
So I made a mistake. I mean, I'll move reconsideration. I think, I mean, in fairness to all of this, it's following, it's meeting the guidelines. And so I'll just let them see if the ALC likes it better this time, so I'll move reconsideration.
Is there a seconder to that?
Second.
Counselor Long seconded. So I clear the queue. Reconsideration of F5 is now back on the table. Is there any further discussion on F5? Counselor Davis? Oh, sorry. That was my mistake. Thank you for pointing that out. I'll just, I have to call a question on the reconsideration. And what do I label that reconsideration? Yeah, just for reconsideration.
Oh, F5.
F, F5, okay, so, sorry, but thanks for pointing that out. So this is on reconsideration of F5? That's all you're voting on?
Yes or no?
Yes or no, if you want it, on reconsideration, not on the motion?
We'll reconsider it or not.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you. So I've called a question. Everybody wants to push their buttons, or you're all in favor? Okay, there we go. And it carries, Counsel Richter, Counsel Davis opposed. So now it's back on the table. Thank you for that. So now it's back on the table. Is there any further discussion on F5? Counselor Davis?
I guess, because I was looking in the afternoon, I didn't get the comment, and like it was pointed out in 2007, it was refused. I don't know what would have changed as agricultural in the soil. Just a typo error. I, again, this fellow wants to set up his younger generation. He wants his son to start and all that sort of stuff. And I would wonder if chopping farmland up isn't necessarily, if, if we're in Alberta and you had 160 acres or four or five sections, it's, it's quite one thing, but the phrase, valley's a little different. But anyhow, on, this is a typo error, I think, 187. He can raise his family on, on the farm and afford to be a farmer, but it says framer. Now, I, I know, I know I should know better, but does that mean that he's going to have a second job as a framer? That's, that's farmer.
I think, I think farmers are, they do everything.
No, but if this goes to the Land Commission, and I just, can somebody write that?
Can maybe be pointed out, yeah. Farmers do everything. Work at night framing. Counselor Long?
Well, I just wanted to point to the positive reasons that are listed in the application. And it, and it talks again about the affordability of farming. It's, it says that there are some advantages in, in, in farming the two sections rather than one whole section. And he's talking about his son. So that's, those are the kinds of things that have changed. That's why they're allowed to come back and, and reapply, because the economics have changed immensely on running a farm. So let's give them a chance.
Thank you, Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, just a quick question through you, to, through the chair, to staff. When, when, when someone applies to the ALC like this and gets turned down, is there guidelines as to how they might reapply, either by time or by change of application?
Your Worship, they, effectively, there's a five-year lag period that they have to go through. So they can't reapply for the existing application within five years. If it was a demonstrably new application, they perhaps could, could apply earlier. But I believe this complies with the five-year timeframe.
Okay, thank you. And regulation, thank you. Counsel Qualley?
Thank you. I do understand the comments that Counselor Long made about the positive aspects. And, you know, with his son wanting to be on the farm, he's going to want his own house. And if it's a separate property, he can have a new dwelling and all of those things. I understand all that. My frustration and the reason for the reconsideration is just the sheer volume of things that are coming across this desk in relation to the ALC. And I just wish that anybody who has an opportunity to lobby somehow the provincial government to help create some, I don't know, better processes, I guess, through the ALC. It would be a, a good opportunity for us to do that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll call a question on F5. And that carries with Counsel Richter, Counsel Arneson, Counsel Sperrle, and Counsel Davis opposed. So now we've done F5, F6. We've got correspondence, a motion to receive. Counselor Fox, second by Counsel Arneson. Counsel Richter, do you want to speak to receipt?
Yeah, because the letter was addressed to City of Surrey, it looks like.
It was addressed to us, but in the body it had the City of Surrey, so a little bit of a, not much we can do. We're just receiving a letter, so there's not much we can do about that. But it was addressed to us with, he forgot to change, I think he forgot to change the form letter. So I'll call a question on G1 for receipt. And that carries unanimously. And other business, Counselor Long, I'm going to put your mic on. If you want to push, yeah, I'll push your button, and then if you want to move it and speak to it. Okay, Counsel Long?
Thank you, and I hope that council will support this. Yeah, I'm just going to move, do I want me to read it all? It's not bad.
Yeah, read it.
So, actually, the, the motion is there for you, but I would like to insert the words recreational marijuana in it. I didn't, I did, I just talked about cannabis advertising, but I think it would be recreational cannabis that we're talking about here. Whereas the Government of Canada, they're, they're going to be legalizing it. So this is a motion that will restrict the advertising of cannabis in our communities.
Okay, so you move that, seconder? Counsel Fox?
And I have just a small statement that might help clarify why I'm bringing this forward. I spent a bit of time on the West Coast and in Washington and Oregon. And I was absolutely blown away with the amount of billboards and road signs, and even folks dressed as monkeys with signs saying, "Come on in, it's five joints for 20 bucks." So, I mean, we can't debate what the federal government's going to do, I suppose, at this stage on legalizing recreational marijuana, but we certainly can appeal to them and to the municipality, the Union of British Columbia Municipalities and our provincial government to stop the proliferation of advertising in our communities. We don't want to be enticing our, our folks just to, to buy pot. If it's available, it's available, much like cigarettes. People will smoke, they can buy a cigarette, but they don't have, you don't get the Marlboro Country sign anymore or big, you know, sales on cigarettes. So I think it's really a prudent thing for us to do. And I have been in correspondence with my colleagues with the FCM, who are meeting in Wood, Wood Buffalo right now. This, this week is their board meeting. And they're anxious to get our, our motion from this council if it should pass. And they will help facilitate staff doing a review of it and passing it on to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities through to the federal government. And I see Mr. Back wants to say something.
He didn't note the seconder, Your Worship? We didn't, we didn't pick up the seconder.
Oh, the seconder was Counsel Fox, yeah. And I'm moving on to Counsel Richter.
Yeah, and I'd actually like to ask the mover if he's willing to go a step further, because I think the Ontario model that was introduced this week is fabulous. And I think FCM and, and UBCM should be encouraging our province to follow the Ontario model. And how this is going to be handled overall, how it's going to be marketed, distributed, sold, located. I, I think they've, Ontario's got the winning formula on this one.
I think that's a good point. This is to do with promotion, but that's to do with distribution, and certainly a good, good point. It may be a separate motion.
So, okay, well, I'll put a separate motion then.
This is to do with promotion, so, but certainly something we can do. Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I did have a, a question about that, and one that came up to me just as we were speaking about this through Counsel Long. So my, I guess my question is, if you could just clarify whether or not this is just for the advertising aspect, because there's many different ways to advertise. Are you just talking about billboards, or talking about newspapers, or?
Your Worship, the, the motion, the motion calls for the same regulations as is being used for tobacco in terms of recreational cannabis. So I guess that, whatever those regulations are, I can't remember now whether you can have it in a...
It, it did occur to me, sorry, it did occur to me, just as a point of clarification, that those standards were developed over time for a very specific product that's quite different than marijuana. And I'm not taking position one way or the other. But I do wonder whether or not that might infringe on freedom of speech or expression if one was to not allow certain types of advertising.
I think we'd leave that up to the federal government and provincial government, because they regulate advertising of tobacco and alcohol products. Liquor also has, has very strict regulations. So I think this motion, if I get it right, is, we're not the ones going to be writing this legislation, but we're just imploring and going through FCM, which is a good place to go, because they go into more of the detail and lobby with, with the regulators. So anything else from council? Seeing none, I'll call a question on I1. And it carries with Counsel Arneson opposed. And Counsel Richter, you wish to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to put on a motion that this council write to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities and the Union of British Columbia Municipalities, encouraging these organizations to support the Ontario model of...
Distribution.
Distribution and regulation of recreational cannabis.
Thank you. Seconder? Counsel Fox, discussion on the letter. Seeing none, I'll call a question on, I'll call this I2. Ms. Bauer? I2? All right. Questions called to write the letter to UBCM. Yeah, asking for a vote, yeah. And it carries unanimously. Yeah, it is, it was mentioned, UBCM and FCM. Maybe just add, add the, as a friendly, as long as it's normal. Yeah, as long as, you know, with councils amenable to that, just, okay, great. So, any other business?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes, I've been contacted by some developers in the last little while who are very frustrated with the length of time it's taking to get the Brookswood Fernridge OCP finalized. And they're wondering if they're, because my understanding is now we're probably not going to have a vote on third reading until October, right? Because in July, we said we wanted a full council present. So we're likely not going to have a vote until October.
Actually, that was a topic I was going to bring up as soon as you're finished. So I wanted to canvas council on a suitable date that we could bring it up sooner.
Okay. But the, the point that they've been, that has been raised to me, which I, I think is a, is a valid point, is that the in-stream applications that have come in, like, we had set a date back in May that anything after May 16th would be processed under the new OCP. So those applications are all hanging in limbo until the OCP is finalized. So they're losing time on developing their properties. So the question that's been posed to me is, is there any reason why we couldn't, because of the fact there's been a delay in the final approval of this? It didn't go through in July as was originally anticipated, and now it's not going to happen until October, that there could be a relaxation of the requirements of processing? So the ones that have come in, say between May 16th and July, whenever we had our meeting, July 24th, be also processed under the 1987 plan? Is there anything stopping us from doing that? Like, how, how could we do that?
Counsel passed the previous deadline, if you will, by resolution. Counsel could amend, vary, or pass a new deadline of July 24th if they so chose. And that would deal with the applications that were received between May 16th and July 24th in the scenario presented.
Yeah, look, I was not at the May meeting when the decision was made, but what was the logic behind the May 16th day?
Seffy?
Your Worship, it was based on what staff anticipated the following steps or the next steps, subsequent steps at that time to be. And the fact that the township was experiencing a large number of applications, whether completely complete or incomplete, being submitted by various developers, landowners, or speculators, and wanting to make sure that there is adequate certainty provided as to how those applications were being processed.
So, but basically, they've been caught up in almost an administrative cycle here that was no fault of their own. It's just the way that things worked out for us. So I guess what I would have to do is put forward a notice of motion on that. How many applications fall into that, that have come in between May 16th and July 24th?
Maybe about half a dozen, Your Worship?
Okay, so the proper way to, would be to do a notice of motion.
I think so, Your Worship, unless it was a consent of council, given the discussion.
Well, just, just a concern, maybe around discussion, I could ask staff. There would be, you know, we, we set a deadline, May 16th. And all the other developers, if there are developers that would have known that, that they could have added more than they would have, now we're, we've sort of said, yeah, okay, those few that sent it in got caught in a time lapse. Okay, yours can go through, but there'd be other, other property owners that would say, well, hold it. If I'd have known that, I would have put it in. Now we're, we're setting two dates. We had issues with that with property owners that came in after the 16th and said, hey, I should have, you know, I'm kind of concerned about that. But that's up to the council to decide if they want to do it. I'll, I'll get, there's a speakers list here, and then we'll consider that. Counsel Fox?
Yeah, thank you. Even the May 16th in, in retrospect was, you know, I, I understand why we did it. It was a bit hasty, and some people were inches, millimeters away from their application being prepared. And it caught them a bit by surprise, because things like surveys or other aspects of the, the documentation necessary for a complete proposal application do take time. And by motion, we, we did set that in play. By motion, we did delay it to the June, July 24th. I certainly have no difficulty. There's no guarantee of speed associated with a, a motion of this nature to accept all applications based upon the complete, all completed applications being accepted up until inclusive of July 24th. So if a motion were to be forthcoming now, I would certainly second it, or I'd be prepared to make the motion to that, to that extent. We're talking somewhere, I think on the township website, if I'm not mistaken, there's only one application that shows that was actually received in that interim premise from May 16th. 16th to the...
Mr. Seffi has a comment. Mr. Seffi?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just before counsel actually takes a vote and deliberates further, one point that needs to be made clear is that we have not evaluated the impact that those applications that will be affected by any council extension, what the impact might be on the Brookswood, on the 2017 plan. In other words, they may either be rendered inconsistent or may trigger another amendment to the 2017 plan, if in fact that was to be adopted. So there's, there's technical challenges, and there's equity and other sort of challenges that you have referenced, Your Worship.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Long?
Well, Your Worship, I'd be scared that we tinkle around with this much longer. We're in a bit of a pickle here, and I would suggest, and let's call a spade a spade, if we don't have a councillor change their vote after the public hearing tomorrow night, it's all moot. So I don't know why we wouldn't consider taking the vote after the public hearing, which is what has been done in the past and other councils do. They don't always wait a month or a week for things to change. If the public hearing can't convince another councillor to vote for this 2017 plan, then it's done. So it's up to you, Your Worship, but I would, I would suggest we call the vote right after the public hearing.
Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah. I appreciate what Mr. Seffi has said with the ramifications, because I don't know, I mean, he's just said we've got half a dozen applications, and I don't know where they are or what areas are affected by it. I wonder if we could refer this idea to staff for a recommendation that would, from a recommendation from staff that would promote fairness in the process. I'm just, as I say, the issue of fairness has been raised, I think it's a valid one because they're stuck. Is it possible, like, could we offer these ones, these half a dozen applications, the option to go under the new plan or the old plan? Because they're in that limbo?
Your Worship, it becomes challenging, as Mr. Seffi said, from a technical perspective versus the equity perspective. If there is a 2017 plan that's adopted, then all those, those concerns come into play. If the 2017 plan is not adopted, then there's no issue, those applications just proceed under the 1987 plan. And that, I think, leads to your point in terms of if we had perhaps more understanding of the potential timing for the consideration of the matter at third reading, that may deal with some of these concerns.
So maybe it'll, one thing I was going to ask counsel is to look at availability sooner, there are, like, myself, I'm away at a conference, Counsel Whitmarsh is away, so then that, the next meeting, we're down two, and we did have a motion to have everybody here, and I believe there's another councillor away.
I'm away October 2nd.
October 2nd, so I was going to, and then we're into Thanksgiving weekend, so I was going to canvass counsel, like, there's an available date on the 16th, it's a Monday, we don't have a council meeting. It's, it gives us a chance to speak to the third reading. If we go, and I hear Counsel Long is saying, however, I think after the public hearing, we may be tired, and then we're going through amendments, and it could really drag on for a long time, although if counsel wants to do that, that's certainly mental. But I think the next time, if it's, if members of council can let me know if there's everyone available on the 16th, that might be an appropriate time. Mr. Backen, is there...
Just pointing out, that's October 16th, Your Worship. One option maybe to go away from on Monday, which depends on everyone's schedule, but remember, the third reading could in theory be held at any time during the day, and that could be in the evening, depending on people's schedules.
That's right. So, so that may help with this conversation to speed this long. I'm all in favor of getting this decision made as soon as possible. So we're looking at, right now, we're looking at public hearing on the 12th, and... Thursday? Okay, well, I was committed all day, but, okay, Thursday doesn't work. Thursday doesn't work, and then we're, then we're into, we could do Friday morning, or we're into, then we're into UBCM. I don't know, hold it, then we're into 18th, that's when I'm away. And when are you back, Counsel Whitmarsh?
The 27th.
27th, so it has to be after the 27th, so...
I'm away from the 25th to the 5th.
Okay, so we're past the 5th, and so now we're in two... Well, October 16th, then we're in Thanksgiving, so we're not going to do that. We could do Tuesday, October 10th. We could do October 11th, for me, I'm just saying. I know some, Counsel Richter, you have a teaching schedule, so I don't want to impact that. Wednesday, does a Wednesday work, October 11th during the day?
I'm away from the 9th to the 16th.
Okay. Yeah, we could. So the 16th doesn't work for you during the day? No, okay. How does the 17th, how is the 17th for counsel? I mean, we can do it quickly now.
Worship, I think we're almost through, because there's only a very few number of days, but one date that we missed was September the 15th, which is a Friday. Did we discount that one already?
I did mention that, but nobody was...
Gone, okay.
During the day?
During the day.
Anytime? The day would be all right.
15th, where are we here?
When, when is this?
September 15th, that's Friday.
September 15th.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Make sure everybody is...
That's this Friday.
It's this Friday. So we have a public hearing on the 12th, that gives us a couple of days to digest it. No, I don't, but we have to fit it in with counsel. Yeah. Are you, okay... No, you work during the day, so you can't make it during the day. So Friday. Does 4 o'clock on Friday? It's 4 o'clock on Friday?
No.
No, okay. No, that's fine. So that's where, you know, we're moving, then it's, then it's from there to the 16th, and 16th doesn't work, so it's the 17th.
Over.
Of October. Well, the 23rd is a council meeting, it would be nice to have a separate meeting, because this could take some time, as experience showed me, or it could be real quick, you know? September, no, there's one that is not... Yeah, not everyone's in agreement, there's some that can't make it, so Counsel Arnison, Counsel Arnison can't make it. So we're looking for where everybody can make it. No, but Counsel Sperrle can't, so we're... I think we're down to the 17th or 18th of October, and that gets us clear from council meeting where we can discuss it. Let's do, who is not available on 17th or the 18th?
I can't in the day on the 17th.
Okay, so the 18th?
On the 18th all day.
Yeah, we got Port of Ayrans, 18th?
I can't make the night of the 18th.
Okay, so can we come daytime, you work? Counsel Sp...
Neither can Counsel Qualley.
Friday's not workable. No, no, Counsel Arnison, I said, oh...
I said no.
Oh, you said notify.
I said no.
Sorry, I knew somebody, there was, I'm trying to find a date, so 18th, what time on the 18th? And the 18th, we have... Can any meetings be changed? Are these in stone, that far out, that we can get counsel together? Senior's advisory? Oh, you're not, okay. Not in town. Okay, so that was the one.
What's the 17th like? What's the problem with the 17th?
I'm not here, there's two members of council, and neither's Counsel Whitmarsh. We're just trying to find a date here. Yeah, yeah.
Why are you putting me on the spot here? Everybody's got other schedules, all right?
Just asking if there's a time.
Okay, so have your meeting, and I won't be there, no big deal.
Sorry, we're just trying to have a friendly conversation on, if, you know, people can, I mean, I'm looking at my schedule, I'm changing, I'm quite prepared to change some of these meetings to make it work, but we have to get a consensus, so, because the 23rd, it'll be the 23rd then, and we'll just start earlier that day. And carry on. Well, council meeting, 23rd. October 23rd, that's... Start early, okay. We tried, it doesn't work for anybody, so... Well, I think we can remember. This one's pretty good. We are, okay, so we're, we'll just go with...
Worship, just to make sure we canvass it all, you may have done this already, it is technically possible, depending on how long the meeting goes, to do it after the public hearing.
Yes, we can. It is technically possible. Would counsel be amenable to that, to put it on the agenda? If, if it was, but we have to, today's a... Do we have enough time? We can put it on? Is there, yeah?
Depends entirely on how the preamble is read out, because it can be done, because the meeting is duly called. So that's an option if counsel likes that. I'm certainly saying that the longer we go, the more it does create difficulty in the transition time, as was originally suggested, about trying to extend that, which then has implications, because we have to wait to see how the plan proceeds.
13th of... 13th doesn't work, doesn't work for some people. Doesn't work? Yeah, there's conflict there, so I think the option is to go to the 23rd, and which is only a month away, a little bit more, and we have some time to digest it and review it.
Just to help, if it's committee meetings of the council, of the township that are in conflict, those can be moved.
Yeah. Okay. I'm just going to miss something I was committed to, but that's the way it goes. How's the 13th evening for everybody? How is the 13th evening?
Of October?
No, September. This Wednesday. So do I, but I'll move it. Okay, so I think we're back to the 23rd, you know. Let's just, I think tomorrow night, by the time we get done, everyone will be tired. We'll move to the 23rd. We have all the record to review from the minutes, so that should be fine. Well, that's, it's going to take time for them to go through the process anyway. They can wait. It's just, I'm not, I'm not doing this to, we're doing it for proper planning, and this is, I think, important that we do it properly. Not, not everybody can make it, sorry. Excuse me, I don't know what you're talking about. I'm willing, I've gone through my calendar, I'm willing to make anything work, and, and obviously, it's not, not working, so that's not appropriate. So it doesn't matter, we're going to go to the 23rd, start early. We can't get consensus. The whole idea is to see if we get consensus, that's not happening, so... Yeah, I tried. Okay. Any other business? Counsel Fox?
I'd like to go back to the discussion we had earlier with, which Counsel Richter initiated with respect to the applications that have come in subsequent to May 16th and prior to July 24th. And if I could make a motion that staff prepare a very brief report with the number of applications that have come in during that intervening time that comply with both the 1987 plan and the 2017 plan with respect to the, with respect to the completion of the documentation with those applications.
Seconded by Counsel Richter. So the motion is, I'll just read the motion out. I'm going to clear the queue so we can speak to the motion, okay? Anybody wants to speak to the motion, push your button, thank you. And we'll just wait for the motion, and then I'll get you on. It's a busy time this fall, September and October, with UBCM and Thanksgiving and everything else coming up. And they've been waiting for 13 years, four weeks, is going to be a big difference, I don't think so.
That staff will hear a report with the number of applications that have come in between May 15th, 2017, and July 24th that comply with both the 1987 plan and the 2017 plan.
Thank you. So that's Counsel Davis?
I just, when will we receive that?
By next meeting.
It'll be next week.
Next meeting?
Yeah, next meeting being, okay.
Okay. That would be I3.
Your Worship, just before we vote, that's the timeline. Mr. Seffi, may I want to comment, because you, it means we want the memo ready by, for the next meeting, it'll be ready by Wednesday noon.
Yeah, so do you need more time?
It is virtually impossible to have that done for the next meeting of council.
So the meeting after then, October 2nd. Okay, would that be okay? That's okay, Counsel Fox?
As soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible. Okay, I'll call a question on I3. It carries with Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Arnison, oh, sorry, you didn't push your button. So if you could record, Counsel Long's motion, or vote is opposed, and Arnison and Whitmarsh opposed, carries. Any other business? Motion terminated?
Termination.
Counsel Davis moves it seconded. Seconded, Counsel Qualley, all those in favor, pose, carried. Thank you.